The Shrewsbury Zoning Board of Appeals, first order of business, I need a motion to approve a bill for $528 to the community advocate for the March 25th, 2024 legal notices.
Move to approve?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Moving right along to our six, first 6:30 hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Richard Ricker of 11 Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling that does not increase the nonconformity upon property located at seven Temple Court in the rural B zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 19, Plot 037000. State your name for the record.
Good evening to the Chair and to the members of the board. My name is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue, as you know, but for the record. I'm here with Paul Valenti, who's the owner of the property at Seven Temple Court. He's seated to my right. This is a request for a special permit to demolish the structure that is there and to replace it in accordance with the plans and the plot plan that you see. As you can see from the plan that has been submitted, the proposed house footprint will decrease the nonconformity and will actually bring the setbacks in a little bit on this point. With that in mind and knowing that this is a special permit and this is for a single-family use and it will remain a single-family use, I would suggest to you respectfully that this is in keeping with the byline as much as there is no harm, no nuisance or otherwise, it's still a single-family house. There is no damage to the neighborhood or to the general public and I would ask that you approve it as a special permit therefore. And I think you have elevations as well.
We do.
So you can see what he's talking about. It would be a vast improvement as if you've gone and looked at the site, I know some of you or all of you probably have, it's a vast improvement to this property and sorely needed. So if you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Ms. O'Neil, anything else to add?
No, no comments. All the required materials were there. I do, I don't know, were there waivers requested?
Oh, Jesus, you know, I always, I feel like I'm new at this waiver stuff.
It was...
If I can have a second?
L, M, and N. So, location of the utility lines and connections.
Utility lines are there, they're already in. Some of these waivers are born out of the fact, and I talked with our town planner about this issue, to send a surveyor out to resurvey these things in order to do these things. In some of these cases, and particularly these two cases, we're talking about in excess of $1,500 to $2,000 more to do this. Mr. Valenti did install the sewer and utilities to this site and actually installed it for his neighbor going into the site at no cost to the neighbor before. I would suggest that there's no change to the entry into the property of these utilities. They're already installed, sewer, water, and electricity is already installed to the extent necessary and there'd be no further excavation or otherwise to do that, right, Paul?
Just to connect it to the house.
Just to do the connection to the new house. So with that in mind, we asked for that particular waiver. Drainage calculations, there will be a requirement, and the reason we asked for this waiver is there will be a requirement, if you do allow this, which we hope you will, there will be a requirement for drainage calculations to be presented as part of the building permit process because there is stormwater and other drainage issues that need to be addressed in that context. So it, again, requires further engineering and further cost without knowing whether or not you've got the permit to go, to move forward. So we asked for that waiver for that reason. So it's gonna, they're both going to happen, it's just that they happen in different contexts and at different times. So I think those are the waivers, right, Louise?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Peter, questions, comments?
It meets the special permit criteria, it improves the setbacks, no issues for me.
Dan?
I have no issues.
Kevin?
I don't have any issues either.
David?
Same here.
Okay. Great, this is a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B to demolish a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and rebuild a single-family dwelling that does not increase the nonconformity at Seven Temple Court in the rural B district and also waivers under sub L, M, and N.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next 6:30 hearing, this is to hear the appeal of Jeremiah Galan of 42 Maple Street, Paxton, Mass. for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4C, to expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure upon property located at 14 Rivelli Ave in the Residence B1 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 40, Plot 043000. Good evening, can you please state your name for the record?
Hi, my name's Jay Galan, I'm the architect for this project. Owners are Andrew and Megan Young, they're not able to be here tonight, they had a baby a couple of weeks ago and now they have more kids than they have space in their house, so that's, that's the reason for this. The request for the special permit and for undertaking this project in general, so it's a, it's a Cape-style house, the scope of work is pretty straightforward, we're proposing to remove the roof and kind of the half-story second floor and essentially convert the house to a colonial with a slight overhang in the, in the front, so the house is currently non-conforming in front yard setback clearance, so 30-foot setback and currently the house is 25.9 feet from the front property line. There's also a kind of attached roof structure over the front landing, which is going to be removed, but the surveyor didn't include that in his, on his plan, so it's not really relevant, although I think it's important because we are, I believe we're decreasing the, the nonconformity to a point because we're, we're taking that off and our new cantilevered second floor will extend forward less than that particular structure extends forward. So anyway, it's, it's a simple project, essentially creating more space on the second floor to offset the necessity for the bedrooms and create more space for the, for the, for my clients, which they would appreciate very much the opportunity to expand their house, stay where they are, they love the street, they love the neighborhood, they don't want to move, but they need to do something, so this is the, this is the best option for them. And I, I don't feel that there's really any impact on the neighborhood at all. There was another house on the street that did a similar project a few years ago and appears that a lot of the houses, you know, work's been done to them and it'll be a positive thing for the neighborhood to, to make the house, you know, more livable for this family and for future residents.
Thank you. Ms. O'Neil, anything?
No comments.
Okay. Peter?
I think it's a de minimis change in the setback, I think it looks great, no problems.
Dan?
I have nothing to say.
David? I'm sorry, Kevin?
That's all right. No, I agree with before and it definitely fits in with the context of surrounding properties, which is nice, so thank you.
David?
I agree with all that's been said before, it's only two feet and it's an improvement.
Great, thank you. Public hearing, is there anyone that wishes to be heard? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a, motion please?
I move to approve a special permit under Section 4C to expand a pre-existing non-conforming structure at 14 Rivelli Street in the Residence B1 district.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks. We didn't have any waivers for that one.
No waivers.
Oh, no, we, we did. D and E.
Okay.
And I and J.
Oh, no.
And K and L and N, and O and P. I think we can do another vote, right?
No, it's okay, I think we can move, we can have a vote without them.
I think, yeah.
Okay, apologize, little clerical error here, we do have some waivers that we need to approve, so can I get a motion to approve?
Second motion, I move to approve the requested waivers under subsections D, E, I, J, I, K, L, M, N, O, and P.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. Next hearing, this is to hear the appeal of Gerald Sastaro of 139 Osgood Road, Charlton, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition 36 and seven tenths from the rear yard where 40 feet is required on a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling upon property located at 29 Melvin Avenue in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 32, Plot 151000. Good evening, state your name for the record, please.
Gerald Sastaro.
Point of order?
Yes.
I'd like to recuse myself.
Okay. Thank you. We have Timothy, who's going to step in for David? Good evening.
Hi.
How are you?
Good.
Good. Can you give us a little idea of what you'd like to do?
Yes, an addition onto a one-bedroom, one-bathroom house, it's approximately 750 square feet at this point, and I'd like to add a bathroom and a bedroom. The reason being, future medical needs of the residence.
Okay.
And that.
All right. Ms. O'Neil, anything you'd like to add?
No, I think we have everything we need within the plot plan provided. It shows the proposed addition in the back, creating the, you know, need for a variance for, it's going to be 36.7 feet from the rear yard setback. There's existing nonconforming on the side yard, but they're not making that any more nonconforming, so we're just looking at the, the rear yard.
Okay. Peter?
Sure. So I, for a variance, we need to find that there is something unique about the shape, the soil, or the topography of the lot, or about the existing buildings on the lot. What it looks like to me in this case is that in terms of where you have options for an addition, your options are pretty limited within the building envelope. I see that you've got a bulkhead there, there's an existing structure that it looks like you're trying to add on to, you could maybe squish it to make it smaller or irregular, but it's ultimately a pretty small change and doesn't make the nonconformities really much worse and, and it just carries forth the existing nonconformity. So I would, I would say on that basis, on the basis of the existing structure, you meet the criteria for variance, in my opinion. So that's all I have.
Dan?
I agree.
Kevin?
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add, it's, it seems very, very minimal and as Peter spoke of with other elements on the existing dwelling, it makes sense to put it where you have put it.
Tim?
Is the relief sought just for the rear setback only?
Yes.
Although the side is...
The side is no more nonconforming than already exists.
So the, so the pre-existing side that's nonconforming is 7.8 feet and then essentially the new addition will be the same?
Correct.
To that. Okay, I have nothing further.
Great. All right, public hearing, anyone wishes to be heard?
They're my neighbors, I love the idea.
Would you like to stand up and state your name for the record?
My name's Fred DeTyle.
If you could just come on right up, it would be helpful for us to have it on record.
Guys like him to make me look young, so I'm here.
Can you give us your name again?
My name is Fred DeTyle, I live 19 more left, I live next door to Paul and Mary. And they're great neighbors and I'm just here to support them.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved, can I get a motion, please?
All right.
Including waivers.
I move to approve a variance under Section 7, Table 2, to construct an addition 36 and seven tenths feet from the rear yard where 40 feet is required at 29 Melvin Avenue in the Residence B2 district and also to approve a waiver under subsection L.
Second?
Second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Wonderful. Okay. Next hearing, this is to hear the appeal of Richard Ricker of 11 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, for a special permit to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 4B, to alter dormers at the third floor on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling upon property located at 105 South Quincy Ave in the Residence B2 zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 38, Plot 109000. Good evening again.
Good evening again, Madam Chairperson. Again, for the record, my name is Richard Ricker and I'm an attorney with law offices at 11 Maple Avenue. I'm here with Dennis Tam, who is the principal of the owner of the property, he's seated to my right. This is a request to do renovations to the premises that are presently on the house, I would describe it as a Cape bungalow type of structure. And this is to essentially raise the roof with some dormers and to straighten out the roofline and to essentially add some room up on the upper levels of this house. You will note, and I have some photos here, if you'd like to see them, of some surrounding properties there are, it's not unusual to...
If you bring them up, we keep them?
One of these, the first of these photos, it's down here.
Sure.
The first of the photos is the property right next door, there's a couple of those across the street as well, and what these, what these show is similar, similar structural improvements to properties around there that essentially put dormers on the upper levels in, in some cases for views, in some cases for storage, in some cases for additional rooms for the homes that they're in. This is still the same structural footprint, we're not expanding the footprint whatsoever, it's all within the footprint of the home. I would suggest to you, it is, it doesn't change the character of the house in any way, shape, or manner, other than just add dormers up, up on the upper levels. With respect to this house and to these changes, I would respectfully suggest that there is no harm or no nuisance value whatsoever to the general public or to the neighborhood and in fact, this is again, an improvement to the neighborhood, this is an improvement to the, to the house. There have been a lot of properties in this particular vicinity that have improved in this nature and I would ask therefore that you consider this and, and grant the special permit. The waivers that we requested are E for the property lines and location of buildings and building properties and properties directly across the street. What I have submitted to you is the, a copy of the tax map, you'll note that that does show you the neighboring properties. This, this property, believe it or not, in this busy area, somewhat stands alone except for the property next door, which is 39 feet away. We did do the measure and that is shown, that was a measure that was done by hand with a tape measure, that shows the distance from the property to 107. The, again, on F, we asked for a waiver as well. These requests are all born out of cost considerations and the fact that in this particular case, I suggest and I submit to you that I think the tax map does it, it shows us the property lines of, of this particular property and those around it. And again, this is all within the present footprint, so there's no expansion of the footprint, so therefore I ask that the waiver be considered a reasonable request. The location of all building entrances and exits and driveways, parking lots, and loading areas, which is J, none of that changes. You can see it on the tax map, it's, it's laid out pretty clearly there and that is, is pretty straightforward. Again, these are born out of a cost issue, as I alluded to in the previous presentation. Location of utility lines and changes, there are no changes to the utilities, there are no changes whatsoever, so there'll be no digging, there'll be no, no, no change to those connections at all. So I've asked for that waiver as well on behalf of my client. And I think, Louise will help me if I'm wrong, but I think, oh, and then drainage calculations again, no, no yard work, there's no excavation work, there's no change to anything in, on this lot. And then the existing conditions and proposed changes shall be differentiated by color hatch marks, I did do that, I did, I did submit it, so that we're not requesting anymore. That's O, that we're not requesting. With that, if there's any questions, we'll be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Louise? Any additional information?
No, I think that about covers it. I'm sure there's no other comments. Nope.
Okay. Thank you. Peter?
Thank you. There's no change in the footprint and it doesn't look like the changes will be out of character with the neighborhood, so I have no problems, I think it meets the standard.
Thank you.
Dan?
I think it's fine.
No problems here either. Same here.
Great. Okay, this is a public hearing, is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Congratulations.
Wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You haven't voted.
Very sorry.
I would jump at that, but...
I'll take it.
Can I get a motion with waivers?
Yes. I move to approve a special permit under Section 4B to alter dormers at the third floor on a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and to approve waivers under subsections E, F, J, L, M, and N.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next hearing, this is to hear the appeal of Lawrence Andovick, 775 Hartford Turnpike, Shrewsbury, Mass. for a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct a garage 39.5 feet from the rear property line where 50 feet is required upon property located at 775 Hartford Turnpike in the limited industrial zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 43, Plot 024000. Good evening, and if you could state your name for the record, please.
My name's Lawrence Andovick.
Good evening.
Hi. So my wife and I bought this property in the spring of 2000 and we moved both of our businesses from Westboro to Shrewsbury and we've been talking about adding more storage to this property for years and we've looked at options for, that were just expensive to very expensive. In 2022, I met with Klotler Farms at the Big E and I saw that they offered attractive, well-constructed one-car modular garages. In December, because I'm on their mailing list, they contacted me and they had a 25% off sale, so I said, "Let's do it." And so as I went through the process, I found that I would need a variance because in order to install this building on our property, it must be 10 feet from our existing building and the building itself is 14 feet, so that pushes me into the 50-feet variance. And so why I want to do this is I can, I don't know if you can see this, but this is what we're working with now. It was there when we bought the property, so it's anywhere from 24 to 46 years old by my calculation and it needs a roof, a front door, and siding repair and paint, so generally a lot of time and money for a building that's much too small to do anything. I think you can even see in the picture, I mean, I have to stick my snowplow out in the driveway and we just work around it for the summer and the winter I keep it on the truck. So what I, what we found that Klotler is a, like I said, a one-car garage, it's modular, they've given me the specs for the gravel pad that it has to sit on and I'm working with Joe Record to put the pad in place once we can move ahead. It's going to give us the kind of storage that we need. My, my wife's company, they get pallets of goods and FedEx might drop them off at 6:00 at night, so we have to run over and cover it with a tarp in case it rains or snows. My truck is just stuck out in the parking lot and over the years I've had a fair amount of rodent damage among other things, so I'd like to be able to put that away and then the snowplow and I have another couple of implements, I'd like to be able to store them cleanly. And so I'd like to basically replace it with this. And from my, in my humble opinion, I think it only has a positive impact on the property and the properties around us, because otherwise, anybody who looks at that piece of garbage that we have. But from Route 20, the new building will still be not seen because it'll be completely behind the existing building. To our left and up the hill is undeveloped land that Mr. Paquette farms and his produce washes down the hill and grows in our front yard. And then from the back, it's three or 400 yards of this, I mean, it's like there's eagles back there and coyotes and deer and so there's nobody back there. And then to our right is Emily Design and they're much lower than our property, so they would literally have to walk all the way to the back to possibly see the roof. So it seems like from my, yeah, let's go through these. So I need the, I need a variance of 11 feet, five inches, or six, 11 and a half feet in order to put this project in place. I'd be able to replace an aging eyesore with a much more attractive functional building where we can have the kind of storage we need. I, I think that it has a positive impact on the properties around us and hopefully from my perspective, it actually increases my property value. So that's my story.
Thank you very much. Ms. O'Neil, anything to add?
I think that covered it and the plot plan shows the B and the required setback that's being asked.
Okay, thank you. Peter?
Sure. So as you might have heard me say in one of the earlier hearings, to grant a variance, we have to meet sort of a higher standard than for a special permit. There has to be something unique about the shape, soil, or topography of the land or the existing location of buildings. That would make it a hardship on the, sort of unacceptable hardship or an unfair hardship on the owner to enforce the bylaws written. Here, what I have difficulty with, I think, is that you have a very large lot.
Yeah, I know.
That's mostly empty.
If I had built this building, I would have pushed it 50 feet closer to 20, but that's...
Right. But so I think, just, just looking at it, it's not clear to me why the proposed location couldn't be, if not within the building envelope, then at least not any worse than the, where the existing building is in terms of the setback. And actually, from the plot plan, it looks like the existing building is built up against the, the limit of the building envelope, in other words, it is within the setback.
It is. I think if it were built today, it wouldn't be, because it's only four feet from the building and if you push it six feet...
Oh, sorry.
...from the building...
I'm being unclear.
...it's going to be in the setback.
When I say the existing building, I mean, building number 75.
Well, when they put this building in, I swear, they measured every setback and they put the building as, they built it as wide as they could, because it, it just fits on both sides.
Right.
And, yeah, again, if I had built it, I would have pushed it further to the street.
So if you were to, if you were to put the proposed garage to the east of the larger building, would, is it possible to fit it within the building envelope?
No.
No? Okay. So basically...
It's exactly 50, it's almost exactly 50 feet on both sides.
Right. But you could put it in front of the, you could put it in front of the building and it would be within the envelope.
It's kind of tacky.
Yeah, but you see what I mean in terms of...
No, I perfectly...
It's an, and it's a nice-looking modular building, but it's, you know, the sort of legal standard for us is there has to be a hardship.
The problem with putting it in the front, I think, would also be, we have a tremendous amount of runoff.
Okay.
From, but like I did, we let it... From, but like I did, we literally have cornstalks growing in our front yard from the water coming down above us. And so we're in the back where it is, it's a little drier, because the water all kind of runs to the front. A couple of years ago, I literally got my riding tractor stuck in that mud, and I had to get a, use my truck and to pull the, suck the tractor out of the mud.
Right. Yeah. So I think there might be a topography look there, but again, it's not, it's not a particularly severe slope, at least as it looks from the pictures, so. If it were, if it were a much smaller lot, you didn't have the area in front, I'd be more inclined to support it. But I think the difficulty is, there's just an awful lot of space where it seems like it could go, where it would be within the building envelope. So that's, that's where I'm stuck. But I'm interested to hear what the rest of the board thinks.
Sure. I have a different perspective, and I'm glad that you included the photograph of the back of the building with the shed there, because the elevation lines don't show up on the plot plan, but they certainly, we can see the hardship in the back with the very hilly area that's like at the limit of the asphalt there. So I would find that there is a hardship due to the topography, because it looks like it, the plot slopes sharply upwards from your building, leaving you with very little other option in terms of where to locate the new shed.
In the back, though.
In the back.
In the front. I don't know if we have the same topography issue.
I don't have a picture of that.
Well, I mean, I find the topography in the front to be a little steep as well, since, I mean, as I've mowed it, you know, I mean, the back part that you were just mentioning, that's so steep that you have to be really careful mowing it, because the mower does goofy things. In the front, it's just steep, where in the back, it is very steep.
So that, that's helpful. So the place where you're talking about putting it now has already been flattened out?
Yes. Joe said he would just have, he said it would take him about four hours to flatten out the rest. There's a little part in the back right corner that has to be brought down, but it's, it's only about 2 and 1/2 feet higher than the flat part.
Okay, that's helpful. And so in the front, if you were to put it somewhere in the front, you'd probably have to build some kind of retaining wall, something like that, to have a pad?
Yes.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, because the drop-off from where the driveway ends down is reasonably steep.
Significant. Okay.
And, because we had actually looked at putting, ripping this building down and putting a whole different building in, and once that got over $1 million, we said, "Okay, there's got to be a better way."
Sure.
Because they wanted like $400,000 to level out the front, so that they could actually put a building in. It's like, thank you very much.
Right.
Okay. Great. Evan?
I'm more aligned with Ann's thinking here, and also thinking about adjacent properties, given where the existing building is on the site. I'd prefer a shed in the backyard, and I'd say, most of the population would agree, you'd put shed in the backyard, and to put this in the front yard, given the topography you were just talking about, having to add a retaining wall, and yes, it's a very nice shed, looks good, but.
Still a shed.
It's still a shed, it's still in the front of your business, which isn't ideal, and to that point, even moving it away from the building and kind of in line with your drive, I still think becomes more of an eyesore, not that it is an eyesore, because it's then more visible. I like how it is tucked in behind the existing building as it is. So I don't have any issues with where it's located.
Great. David?
I appreciate everything that's been said before. What I will add is that I think it's, I think the proposed garage that you have for us is a remarkably modest improvement. Like you said, you were looking at, you know, redoing the entire building and the entire lot. Ideally, we could all go back in time and put the building in the right place the first time. I think, I think you're close enough on the bubble with the topography, and it makes sense, from an aesthetic and a business sense, to have the garage in the rear. So I see no problem with the relief.
Thank you. I would agree, topography to me was the overarching theme and the reason why I would support a variance. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that wishes to be heard on this matter? All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Move to close the public hearing?
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7, Table 2, to construct a garage 39 and 5 tenths feet from the rear property line where 50 feet is required at 775 Hartford Turnpike in the limited industrial district, and also to approve waivers under subsections D, E, F, I, K, L, M, N, O, and P.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next hearing. This is to hear the appeal of Brian Lee of 9B Blackthorne Road, Shrewsbury, Mass. For a variance to the Shrewsbury zoning bylaws, Section 7, Table 2, to construct a garage 5 feet from the side property line where 30 feet is required upon property located at 9B Blackthorne Road in the Rural A zoning district. The subject premise is described on the Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate 12, Plot 005027. If you could state your name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name's Brian Lee. I'm here to seek an exception for this two-car garage. I do property management, and the existing garage that we have does not, is not enough storage. My, I drive a truck that's basically an F-150, and I am literally kissing the concrete wall, so I don't, so I can get around the back. So I've had Base Eight Persona, my builders, they've come, they've looked at the space. Back in December, we have an approved permit. The approved permit was to build where I thought we were going to do the garage, where he and, where my contractor and I spoke, and then he found out, or he sent the survey, and once they did the survey, they put 30 and 1/2 feet to the left of my backyard, and that presents a problem, because that means I can't access the backyard with even a push mower. I double-measured today, just to double-check if there's any room where the original plot plan that was included with the permit was, with that, if that was workable. It's not. So I've, I work with the building department, I've asked them what to do here, and so I said, "What if we had to move this closer to my, the line, the property line?" So I spoke to my neighbor, and he's okay with it. Now, the 5 feet is what I would love to have. I'm willing to move it, you know, further out if we have to, because I basically want access to the backyard. The problem with this building, or the reason why I'm looking for a setback, is because I'm at the end of a private, very long private driveway, and I've got wetlands in front of me, which is the majority of my plot. I've got a book running to the left, and also behind my, my property. So the reason, there really isn't much space or alternative where I could put this. And one of the reasons why we want this is because, well, we have a private plow company that comes in, but they come in, it's residential, there are three homes here. They don't always get here, I need to get out for work. I have to, I tend to leave very early in the morning. So the builder's done a garage in a previous home, they've done a really good job with seeking a single-story. We're not removing any of the planting. We are actually trying to, if anything else, put it here, because if I was to do alternatively to the side, my neighbor would see the top of the garage, and I'm trying to put plants around. So I, that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you. Louise?
I've, no comments right now.
Okay. Peter?
So, thank you for your presentation. I have this, a similar question as I had for the previous applicant. You answered it in part. It does look like, and I just opened up the GIS viewer, you have a significant wet area in the front, so obviously, that doesn't make any sense. In the back, is there, is there a reason why you couldn't, you know, sort of looking at the plot plan, move it down into the, to the south and to the west, to have it be just at the back corner of the, of the building envelope?
Well, there's a very old stone retaining wall there, and also, there's, it's wet, soil is very wet back there. It's not like running water, but if you go further back, it does go around the, it does seem like it's a book going from west to south all the way around my property. And I'm trying to not cut too many of the trees there. I mean, what, the power, the beauty of this building, their home is kind of surrounded by trees.
Yeah. So I think, I think similar to the last one, it sounds like you do have a topography hardship, and you do have a soil hardship in terms of the wet soil. So I think on that basis, we could probably meet the variance criteria.
Yeah? I agree with Peter. Evan?
Yeah, I agree with what my cohorts had said previously. You start sticking it further back, you increase your drive, and your backyard becomes a garage. Assuming, you said you talked to your neighbor?
Yes, I did, absolutely.
Yeah. Assuming that that conversation did happen, and he's good with it, then that makes, that makes me happy. So I'm all set.
Great. David?
I have nothing else to add.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody that wishes to be heard on this matter? Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
Just quickly, before we move to motions, is the board comfortable generally with 5 feet, or would we prefer that it be further?
I don't know where else he's going to.
In terms, you know, 6 feet, 7 feet, 8 feet? Or are we happy at 5?
Well.
Well, it's advertised for 5 feet, so can you?
We've done it before. Yeah.
Amended it.
Yeah. But if everyone's comfortable at 5, then, I just wanted to make sure.
I mean, I just feel like, given, to me, I, if you'd like to go, I.
Yeah, just so you know, 5 feet to the left, which is west, is actually better for the neighbor, in terms that the tall trees, we have pretty tall upper bodies that block the top. I mean, I, it's going to be a nice garage, we're going to put like a, what do you call it, the wind.
Cupola?
Cupola. So it'd be nice, but not everyone wants to see the, those side walls of the garage.
Sure.
I can move it to the left and to right, and this is one of those things, I'm going to work with my neighbor. If you say, "Hey, Brian, you know, you're digging this," I think I'm good with my neighbor. If I need to move 6 feet, 7 feet, it's fine. I just want to make sure I have enough space to get from the driveway to actually put my equipment. Like the other gentleman, I actually have a Kubota tractor, because of my line of work. I actually use this. Currently, I'm putting my equipment underneath my deck, which is very not, not productive, not conducive. So yeah, I can move it a little bit, but I think 5 feet is actually a good look to, to where the neighbor's line is.
Okay. All right. If folks are good there, then I'm good.
I don't have a problem with 5 feet.
All right. All right, in that case, move to close the public hearing?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion?
I move to approve a variance under Section 7, Table 2, to construct a garage 5 feet from the side property line where 30 feet is required at 9B Blackthorne Road in the Rural A District. And I'm just checking quickly for waivers. Doesn't look like we have any. Nope. So, yeah, that's the whole motion, then.
Great. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. All right, next hearing. This is a continuation from our February 26 meeting. This is to hear the appeal of the, or this is for a continuation on the property located at 3369 Green Street. This is a 40B project, Pulte Homes of New England, 1900 West Park Drive, Suite 180, Westboro, Mass. This is for a comprehensive permit, to permit the construction of a 300-unit multifamily residential development. Welcome back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you again. Essex Petrie with Pulte Homes of New England. So originally, on our kind of laid-out schedule and agenda, we were scheduled to talk water sewer tonight. We just received our, the water and sewer peer review, as I'm sure that you did as well, earlier today. So we are happy to talk through any specific details that the board may have, or questions the board may have regarding water and sewer. In our initial review of the water and sewer peer review letter, it felt very, it felt like something that we could very easily respond to, and the comments that were brought up by the peer reviewer, we felt were very fair, and we could respond to over the next week, as we get a chance to dive into those plans. But being that we had set aside this time specific this evening to discuss water sewer, wasn't sure if there was any specific questions related to that the board may have.
Anybody off the top of their head have any questions about water sewer that they want to discuss at this point?
I have a point. Maybe I should bring it up later, but I'll try it now. So I think it was mentioned that, not by you, but by staff, that Pulte may, or the developer may retain ownership of one or more of the structures having to do with stormwater. And I, I'm lacking the specifics, because I didn't have a chance to look back at that. But I was wondering about who maintains that, how does that work going forward?
I guess I'm not entirely sure which structure you're referring to, from a stormwater perspective.
It was the culvert.
Is this, if it's referring.
Running under.
To the Brook Street, South Street culvert? Okay, sorry. So if we.
Something else. Go ahead. I think it was something else, but go ahead and talk it over.
Okay. Well, so we did respond to that. That was part of Graves Engineering's peer review on the stormwater perspective, and we have had multiple conversations with Andy, with Chris, and other members of TPW, and did acknowledge and recognize that their, the existing culvert, according to the town inventory, is satisfactory, but there was a blockage. And so in talking with the town, it would be noted on the town's kind of maintenance list for, and flagged for, you know, necessary clearing when it, when it comes up in their list.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to try to find what I was thinking about.
If you could, you could go with the other one, yeah, sure.
Yeah. You guys can move on.
But actually, I appreciate that, because that brings, you know, we wanted to take the opportunity to touch upon a couple of things, and that being one of them. We have provided our responses to both the site plan peer review letter, as well as the stormwater peer review letter, just recently, and so Graves Engineering should have, have that, as well as the town, planning department has our responses. Our traffic engineer did respond to the comments from the town's peer review engineer, assuming that the board has those as well. So we, we wanted to just, you know, express our appreciation. We've been able to make a lot of progress, and hit off a lot of those topics. So we look forward to kind of moving to the next phase on those, once the peer review engineers get a chance to review and respond back, and see where those go. And we just wanted to kind of touch upon what the board sees as the next steps for those items, as well as recognizing that the water sewer came up today. Again, we feel pretty confident that we can respond to those comments pretty quickly in refining our designs and making some of the edits requested. One item that I did want to bring up, and Andy, I'm glad that you're here in particular, was one of the comments from Weston Sampson, was related to review of the pump station designs, as well as the water and sewer lines on Green Street. We are, we actually did submit pump station designs today to the town, as well as the water and sewer line designs for Green Street today. And we're, if the board feels it appropriate that Weston Sampson review those pump station And we're, if, if the board feels it appropriate that Weston Sampson review those pump station design plans, we're absolutely, um, comfortable with that, and I think that it could, you know, save time down the road. The one thing that we did want to ask and put in front of the board and the town is if we could, um, separate the review of the water and sewer lines on Green Street from this process, as that is not part of this project. If the town, um, has a desire to have those reviewed by Weston Sampson, I absolutely have no, um, issue with that, but we just ask that it's be, it's, it's handled under a different, um, timeline than associated with the Emerald Run project, just because it's a different project.
Can we get some intel?
Yeah, if it's related to the project and there may be an impact due to the project, it's certainly under the review of this board. There are certain conditions that we can certainly add to a decision that can be post, uh, you know, public hearing condition that can be reviewed after the place, but, and maybe a misunderstanding, if it's part of the infrastructure, it is under this board's review to make sure that the infrastructure is sufficient, uh, to handle the project. So it is under our peer view. Unless I'm misunderstanding the position.
Well, it, it's, it's technically a different project, so I don't know exactly how to answer that question. As, uh, it's, the, the town will be, uh, owning the, the, um, the, the design and construction of that, the, the infrastructure that we're, uh, that we're talking about, specific to the upgrades in Green Street.
But to clarify, I think the point is, it's within the jurisdiction of this board as far as this hearing, because our job is to ensure that the infrastructure, whatever it is, is adequate, uh, for the project that you're proposing. Is that?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate, yeah. So, I mean, it doesn't seem like it's something that, that we have any problem being peer reviewed. So, you know, I, I don't see why it wouldn't be part of, uh, of the consideration, assuming that there are no issues. I don't see that being a problem, I think it should be an issue that's peer reviewed, because it is the, an important issue and one that we wanna make sure that the, the town and peer review is happy with.
Sure. I was just gonna say, not to belabor it, but just one, I guess the reason we're asking, and then we can decide however is best the board decides. But, um, you know, Emerald Run is the forty B and the applicant of the forty B. And of course, the services need to be adequate and need to be reviewed. But the, uh, the design of the off-site water and sewer improvements on Green Street have been, have, we, we paid for them and we've engaged the, the engineer to do them. But the, um, the client is actually the town of Shrewsbury. So, the design has been done for the town of Shrewsbury, not for Emerald Green LLC. So, we are just saying, we're okay if it, if Weston and Sampson reviews them.
Yeah.
Of course, and we wanna make sure that the services are adequate, and, and we are confident they are. But if there's a, a review of Emerald Run, uh, for the forty B, that, that's perfect, and those pump stations could fit within that. But the off-site Green Street improvements, water and sewer, that were designed on behalf of the town of Shrewsbury, uh, we thought a separate review letter or separate comment letter that Weston and Sampson would do would, would just be to the, to the town of Shrewsbury, not really to, uh, to us. It's, it's a-
Yeah, I think we're all sort of saying-
We're saying the same thing.
We are sort of saying the same thing, so I, I don't-
We'd like to just keep them separate, that, that was the request.
It is separate, but it isn't, it's, it's all part of, of the determination that we have sufficient infrastructure. So it is, it is part of the review, but I understand their point, uh, that there's issues with it, then we can talk about it. But I think it should be part of the review, uh, and then if there's an issue with the review and we feel like it's, um, inadequate, then we can certainly have another conversation about how to deal with that.
So to clarify, you just want it to be two separate documents?
I think so.
Okay.
And maybe just-
Yeah, and we can still look at both of them?
That's fine.
I mean, that's fine doing it that way, I, I, in order to clarify the record, but it really doesn't have, it doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay.
Don't know difference.
It's still gonna be part of the public-
One document or two documents, they're all coming in.
But, but you have the, the design, you have all the calc's that Weston and Sampson asked for. We had, uh, quite a few, um, staff level coordination meetings before the design was done. So, I think the package that, that you have before you, that we've submitted is, is, should be complete and, uh, in really good shape for review.
Okay.
Andy, is there anything else you wanna add?
No, so I mean, just, just a point of clarification, so the water and sewer are to serve this project. There is a, when we put the sewer in Route twenty, we put a lateral onto the property, they're not using that, they're, they're choosing to extend the sewer up Green Street, so.
Why is that, just curious?
Probably because it's probably hard to get to, it's on the other side of the wetlands. But ultimately, yeah, the town will take over the water main and the sewer main in Green Street, and the pump stations on the site will remain private.
Questions, comments?
I think maybe it was a pump station I was thinking about, in terms of-
Yeah, so the sewer?
Yeah.
Yeah, there will be two pump stations part of the project, and that, that comment did come up in the peer review, and, um, we were in the process of designing those, and that, that tends to often be a more construction, um, uh, level detail. But our timing worked out and our, our design, um, was recently completed, then reviewed, and so we did submit, um, those, uh, pump station plans for both of them earlier today for, um, review.
And the ownership of the sewer pump stations would be privately owned and maintained by the condominium, not, not the town, so. And the condominium would engage a licensed wastewater operator who routinely operates and maintains, uh, sewer pump stations in accordance with all of the state regulations.
Okay, great, that's what I was wondering about is, you know, who maintains, you know, is there a schedule, is there a professional involved? So, thank you, that answers my question.
The stormwater, sewer, trash removal, uh, snow landscaping, it's all privately owned and maintained by the condominium.
One of the things we typically do is require as a condition of decision that the master deed include the conditions of the decision for maintenance for common infrastructure like that. And that's usually how we handle it for a condominium property.
Good to know.
Thanks.
Okay, great. Kevin?
I don't have anything further.
Okay, David?
Uh, these are, these are important things to have cleared up, so I'm glad that we had this level of discussion. I like the, uh, having Weston and Sampson do the, the peer review. It's just important for me to know, um, their opinion on it.
You know, absolutely, and I think it, it helps, uh, resolve any potential issues that could pop up down the road. So, um, it's, it's nice to do that, this, at this point in the project, for sure.
Yeah, you have a new thing going in, and so let's do it right.
Yep, I would agree with that. All right. Anything else that we need to-
So, yeah, uh, they're actually, if it's okay, if I, I know that we're the last ones on the, the list, um, you guys moved so swiftly through the other ones. I know that there's been mention of, um, an architectural review, and so we were kind of curious, as to what exactly that is, the review is going to be, um, reviewed against, or, or with, like, if, if there were guidelines that are specific, or what exactly the architecture review would look like.
Anybody wanna tackle that one?
It's something we, we do, you know, we submitted as part of our package, um, you know, initially, our architectural drawings, and we're happy to go through them, um, in more detail and talk through any specifics that, um, that the questions that the board may have. We're happy to bring them up and talk through them tonight if there's something in particular. We just genuinely, um, weren't entirely sure what that review would be, um, looking at from an architectural perspective.
Yeah, my understanding is we don't have any particular design standards outside the town center district, um, but I think-
Yeah, the overlays.
Yeah, but I think the idea is to have an opportunity for the public to weigh in on the designs, is that essentially the?
Yeah, that's typical, I, I'm assuming the board hasn't hired an architect, peer reviewer, uh, which is typical. Normally, uh, projects, uh, under forty B do not have, although you can, you don't necessarily get somebody to review architecture unless you think that there's a problem. You've looked at the plans and you think that there's a problem with the architecture, you can ask to see if we can retain peer review for architecture. But typically, boards may ask the planning board for their input on the architecture and public opinion as well. That's typically the, the extent of it.
So you're saying that it's typically not a peer review on the architectural standards is not, it's not typical in a forty B?
Yeah, correct, unless the board has looked at the plans and they think that there's a major problem with the, with the drawings.
And a problem might be, it's near a historic district and it has very modern architecture or something like that.
Yeah, maybe something more severe.
Yeah.
The plans aren't sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know if we have anything like that here, but.
So I think Peter's comment about just inviting the public to come in and weigh on, weigh in on that was what was on my mind, uh, when we requested it.
Okay.
Certainly if it's beyond, you know, anything that anyone's ever asked for, we're not, I think your plans personally look great.
Thank you.
And we're looking forward to hearing them explained, I think, more, in more detail. I think that there was just, um, sort of a misunderstanding of, of that, whether, you were asking for us to skip over a part of the process that is always included, but it sounds like it's not part of that, so.
And I appreciate that clarification, because we just genuinely weren't entirely sure. So, if, um, what it sounds like then for, um, the April, is it the twenty-ninth, um, meeting, we could have planned to, um, have a, similar to what we've done in the past, more detailed presentation specific to architecture, to invite, uh, the public, uh, to review and, and offer up their, um, comments and thoughts, if that would satisfy the board.
Works for me.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And would you want the planning boards, like, a comment letter from the planning board? Anyone that always brought up as well, the planning board, and-
If they're willing to offer one, I can't hurt.
Yeah, I think more information at this point is better for all of us, to David's point, to rather do it once and do it the right way, even if we're overstating some things. So I think a comment letter from the planning board would be appropriate, in my mind. Do you guys agree?
Agreed.
Okay, yeah.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Okay.
That's great, uh, just, I guess, um, just a couple of other things, I know that, or my understanding is that there's a conflict with the May meeting, um, because of town meeting.
Yes.
And, um, we were hoping that we would be able to just kind of keep our momentum and schedule something in May, being that we are, you know, we're making great progress, and we'd really like to capitalize on that, and, um, we're getting to a point where we'd start to, we'd like to start to understand when we could, you know, think of closing the public hearing and, um, refining our waivers, as was mentioned in one of the, our first meetings, was that our waivers initially were, were a little broad, which is not atypical, but now that we've gone through, uh, these, these meetings, we'll get the opportunity to really refine them and, and define them, uh, and so, kind of when that, that next step would, uh, would happen.
So we had the intention tonight of choosing, um, I believe we landed on May twenty-third, um, as a next step for, um, not having a meeting. We have, um, our town meeting the Monday that we were proposed, so we're thinking Thursday, the twenty-third is gonna work for everybody.
Great. And then just, I guess, if, if you don't mind, just some thoughts on what kind of what the next steps would be, just for our understanding as far as, uh, how we get to that point where we're closing the public hearing, or, or when, what we need to do to get to that point.
Well?
Well, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm filling in for Paul at the last second here.
That's okay.
Where are you guys on the public hearing timeline here, when did you open, where are we on the-
December eighteenth.
December eighteenth, so we have a hundred and eighty days. And basically the determination, the board can close at any point in time. I think it would be very unusual for the board to close before the hundred and eighty days are up for a project like this. But the, basically determination is between your peer reviewers and the board and town staff, making sure that they have enough information for the public record in order to close the public hearing. And then after the public hearing is closed, there's a forty day window to draft a decision. It's, it's sort of my preference, and I think it's probably Attorney Haverty's preference, that the public hearing remain open, uh, in case the board wants to direct to draft a decision. And so that a decision gets drafted, and that can be up to the applicant if they would, if they prefer this, um, way, is to get a draft decision while the public hearing is open, so that we can still take in input, um, from various departments and from the applicant while, while decision is drafted. So typically, we sometimes, um, if you're getting towards the end, the board may direct, um, Paul or I to start drafting a, a decision that could be reviewed.
Does that answer your question?
Uh, I think it's starting to, absolutely. And so, is there anything else from us as far as helping with that drafting of the decision? I know, like I mentioned, the waivers, and, um, is, when does that get, um, kind of wrapped into the drafting of the decision, um, from, um, their perspective, the, the town's attorneys? Because once we do, so I, and I'm not, I, I absolutely wanna make sure that we hit everything and, and we, you know, we're happy to continue to meet with every, every department as appropriate, but, you know, thinking that if our next meeting is with our, the architecture discussion and we're, um, you know, we, we gather in those comments and, and we have those conversations, my hope is that by April, by that meeting, we'll have, um, been able to have our back and forth with the peer reviewer for both site plan, stormwater, traffic, and then potentially, uh, water and sewer as well. So, we're just getting to that point where we're starting to really, um, button those things up, so we're just trying to get a sense of timing.
Mm-hmm. So I think the hundred and eighty days seems to be an important threshold, and then, um, certainly drafting the decision.
Right, we're still waiting on the closeout, like, comment letters from our peer reviewers to make sure, you know, we've got those,
Yep.
you know, response comments from the applicant, so we'll get the, you know, closeout comment letters to see if something was not addressed, or if everything was addressed, and it's, you know, perfect. So, we'll hopefully have all of those in line for April's meeting, discuss, you know, if there is a refined waiver list, if that is what I understood from what you were saying, we would get a refined from the original.
Yep.
We could do that.
Yep.
For the May meeting?
For the April meeting.
Yep.
Um, to have that at least a week in advance for the board to review. That's-
And the one hundred and eighty days would run before the June meeting? So basically, the May meeting would be the last to wrap?
Be the wrap-up meeting.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, hope to, to be all in a good position to be able to do this by May twenty-third?
Great.
Does that sound?
No, that sounds fantastic, and, and obviously, whatever we can do to any other information or, or detail, um, you know, we'll absolutely, um, that would be our goal to hit that.
So certainly, if anyone in, is listening and not here to comment, I don't think we, I'm not sure if we have public commentary, but, um, we still have plenty of time to accept letters, comments, um, critiques of any of the work that's been done up till now. Any other comments from the board? Okay. All right. Do we have anyone that wishes to be heard on the matter?
My name's Alex DeBevo, I've come before a few times, fourteen Avalosa. I do have concerns with the architecture, um, my property, and I'm happy to come back and discuss them. I have major concerns, to be honest with you, and I want that to be a matter of public record. You know, my property is one of the most impacted by this development. You know, I think, if you know our neighborhood, I don't know how many of you've been up that way, it's called the Farmview Estates. And, you know, having invested a million plus into this property in a backyard and buying what I thought was gonna be my forever home, to have, you know, in my opinion, what amounts to college dorm-like townhouses built in your backyard on a hill, is unfair. And, you know, I, I don't know when's the right forum, you know, but I really feel like, as a board, you know, if you were me, putting yourself in my shoes and wondering, you know, if you invested your money and you had the opportunity to speak to a group of people and say, well, how would you feel if this happened to you? I mean, that's, that's what this amounts to. And to me, I guess, as you draft a decision, you know, Mr. Mulcahy, I think you mentioned earlier the theme of the neighborhood. To me, this doesn't fit the theme of the neighborhood. It's a bunch of one-point-five-million-dollar houses in a residential neighborhood, and I, I guess that's the issue what I have with it. Nothing in this decision or the obligation under forty B, to my knowledge, says they have to be four stories. And there's enough tree cover where if the plans in, in the site development was a little different, I think you could make people happy, but I have to admit, you know, I talk to my neighbors and they more or less feel defeated. And that's why they don't come here, because it's like, we come here, you know, we hear a plan was delivered at the last minute, or, and then there's not a whole lot of discussion. On the stormwater and the sewer, I have videos that I will be sending to you guys, um, in the last couple rainstorms. I know there's metrics like a hundred-year average and things that they use, but like, my eyes can tell me that there's a bigger problem. And maybe this, you know, does better for it, but if it doesn't, you know, we're gonna be the ones that bear all that. So, I, I do intend on drafting some more for, formal commentary and sending videos and pictures and things that I have, but I, I do feel like, you know, the architecture, it, it doesn't fit the neighborhood, in my opinion. So, I just wanted to go on record with that, but-
Thank you.
I'm happy to come back if you need me to.
Well, we would very much encourage you and your neighbors, and I'm sorry that they feel defeated through the process. I certainly appreciate every one of them that have come, commented, spent time, energy. And for the record, from my perspective, what a great group of neighbors, they have been very respectful of the process, and that's been helpful to us. So, all this information is really important, and I would highly encourage you to send your videos, your commentary. We are listening, the town is listening, we want this project to be right, but it, it is a forty B, and so there's some things that we don't have any jurisdiction over.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, like, as you draft your decision though, like, what says that these have to be four stories? I mean, I- I mean, I get it, it's great for Polte, but how is it great for the neighbors and my neighbors and my neighborhood? Right? That's, I guess, the question I have. Why can't these be, you know, 150 or 75 units and why can't it be, you know, one story or two stories, right? Like to be sitting out on my deck and buy a property that you think is a farm view, you know, property, a rural zoned property, and then to have to look up a mountain and see skyscrapers that, like I said, I mean, to me, it reminds me of the townhouses when I went to college. I've looked at the designs. And that's what I'm gonna be looking out into my backyard versus the foliage and the setup that we have now. And I'll never forget, when I bought this property, you know, my attorney said to me, the closing attorney, it was like, oh, well, the good thing is no one will ever be able to build behind you. And I get the 40B and the safe harbor and the rules, but I don't, I guess I'd like to hear from you guys, what says it has to be what they want.
Good question. We have a 40B expert here, so let's talk about that and unpack that.
It's a sort of a complicated question, but in order to uphold the denial, and that's what you would be doing by conditioning something that's a smaller project, is you would have to find that there's a valid local concern for denial or a condition that in the applicant's view makes the project uneconomic. And a valid local concern are things like health, safety, building design concerns, things like that, major, major issues. So you would have to find a serious valid concern and that valid concern would have to be more important than the need for affordable housing in town. So it's a very difficult standard for the town to meet, to deny a project or to condition a project that's smaller than what is being proposed.
And to clarify, when you say building design, do you mean aesthetics or do you mean more sort of fundamental?
Yeah, fundamental, infrastructure.
So number, number of units versus the architectural integrity of the units?
That's right, yeah. Well, yeah, well, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, it's if the infrastructure is there and you have a civil design peer review saying that there's not an issue, you're not gonna find a valid local concern. At certain times, there's very few case law where you talk about architecture and design as a valid local concern. That's a very tough threshold to hit.
So in other words, we might, even in a sort of ideal world, we might not have the power under the law to say, we don't like to look at this and because of that, that's enough to say no.
That's correct.
Okay. But presumably, there's other areas in town, right? Like I think the crux of the argument here that I would have is this piece of land is not developable by anyone else that's not going to go with 40B because it's not gonna get past conservation and the other requirements, right? Like why can't we find somewhere else in town where this is more acceptable for the theme of the neighborhood? That's what every hearing that I've heard about sheds and garages and where their placement is, it's disrupting the theme of the neighborhood. That's what this whole project's doing and it's gonna cause financial damages to every resident in that town because anyone that's looking to buy a rural property isn't necessarily going to want this in their backyard. And I guess that's the point. But I mean, I don't know if that's covered at all, but I'd be curious to know if it is.
And I think to that point, the issue is that, and this is the sort of the fundamental paradox with the public or the affordable housing issue, right, is that, you know, you would find many people would say, well, this isn't the right place for it, near me isn't the right place for it, and if everyone says near me isn't the right place for it, it doesn't get built and the housing crisis continues. So I totally hear where you're coming from and totally empathize with what you're saying. I think it...
But there's other issues that are causing a lot of disruption. There's wetlands, there's, you know, nature, there's...
Oh, no question.
Stormwater, so like all those things need to be taken under consideration. I get that's what the point of these hearings are, but I've come to a few of them and this is the second or third time where it's like, oh, we were delivered this, we don't hear about all that. What I see is the brook running through my backyard, the floods at the end of the street and thinking like, okay, well, you know, once this is all said and done, I can get up here and, you know, say whatever I want, but like all of our neighbors are gonna be impacted by this.
Right, no, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
The Mullins letter, just...
Oh, yes, we have a Mullins letter that we need you to sign for Tim.
Tim's gonna sign first.
Tim's gonna sign first. Thank you for reminding me of that. All right, so continuation?
Yeah, although I guess I have kind of a point of order. We haven't officially changed the May meeting to the 23rd, but we need to continue this hearing to the 23rd? So can we just continue it to the 23rd on the understanding that we're right about to officially move the meeting to the 23rd?
Are we continuing to the April meeting and then...
Oh, that's right, that's right. Skip one, okay.
Yeah, May does not exist, Joe.
Right.
Wonderful, thank you.
And what's the date of the April hearing, the 29th? Okay. All right. So I move to continue this hearing to April 29th at 6:30 PM.
Get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So we do need to get a motion to move our originally scheduled May meeting from May 21st. I'm sorry, May 20th to May 23rd in order to not conflict with our annual town meeting.
I move to reschedule the currently scheduled May 20th, 6:30 PM, meeting of the zoning board of appeals to May 23rd at 6:30 PM.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.